Yeah, sure. Spoofish.
That's a good copy.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission for Monday, October 3rd. We'll just run through the agenda here. We do have an established quorum. We are visited by our online Commissioner, Commissioner Roder. I move to, no, I'm not moving to do anything. I am looking for a motion to approve minutes from last September 19th, 2022 meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes on September 19th, 2022.
Okay, first one, second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Billy, do you oppose the minutes?
Oh, no, I say aye.
Okay. Just making sure. All right. Motion passes. This is going to be a fun night. Let's see, recognized persons?
I can't hear my IT com.
Recognized persons not on the agenda?
We have two sets of minutes. So we approved the ones for the 29th. We approved the ones for the 19th.
You have an amended agenda in front of you.
I need the amended agenda.
Because of the special meeting.
Yep, yep, I was looking for my amended agenda, but making sure I didn't place anything. Sorry about that. All right, sorry. We also have a, need a motion to approve the minutes for September 29th, for 2022.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes from the special meeting from September 29th, 2022.
First by Scott.
I second.
Second by Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye, Billy.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
None opposed. Perfect. All right, now moving on to recognized persons not on the agenda. Seeing none, we have a new, Roman numeral, conflict of interest declaration. This is where any commissioners receiving information pertaining to, pertaining to, or otherwise had any contact with any person regarding any items on this planning and zoning agenda. If so, please set forth the nature of that contact.
Not here.
I just want to clarify that. I'll probably rewrite it for these guys. There's two, two things you should disclose. One is if there's a conflict of interest, which is you, one of the members of the zoning commission having an economic interest, or someone in your household having an economic interest, that's a statutory conflict of interest. The second one is communications ex parte with you. So that's not necessarily a conflict of interest. So in other words, if somebody emails Christina or Scott and says, "I hate this," or "I love this," all you have to do is disclose that. That's separate from what an economic interest is. So conflict of interest has a statutory definition that differs from that about having contact. Both should be disclosed and announced prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Got you.
Anyway. Perfect. Commissioner, anybody? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. We got down to the public hearing in action. Tonight, we have a preliminary plat from the Tim, I'm going to start by butchering the last name, Makwa. Did I get it right? All right. Hayden Holmes, a request to approve and propose Fall Creek preliminary plat, consisting of 40 acres south of Silverstone Number 2 subdivisions at the southern termination of South Fifth West Street. The Fall Creek subdivision will consist of 176 detached single-family homes, proposed to be built in five phases. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Mr. Chair, Commission, Audience, Applicant, what we have before ourselves today is a preliminary plat, just a regular plat. This is in a PUD. This is the applicant wishing to plat on land, which is already annexed into the city.
Oh.
It has the R4 designation. Therefore, the R4 property development standards is what we use to govern. So what is being proposed is the Silverstone subdivision, south of it. We have some acreage there. The applicant wishes to continue that development pattern, which will ultimately consist, if approved, of 176 single-family homes. I'm going to get right to probably the biggest thing that staff considered when this was being proposed. So this is actually a very excellent photo, where we can see the existing subdivision, which is there, and then we can see our lovely sewer ponds over there. I can tell you, in working with Hayden Holmes and other potential applicants before this came, right off the bat, Mountain Home does not currently have an issue when it comes to odor with the current residences over there. I live in neighborhoods close by. I know people that live close by. It's not an issue at the moment. Therefore, I don't want it to be an issue in the future. Also, some main concerns we have is we have these large sewer ponds, which are in great condition. We take really good care of them. But another thing we were thinking of is that for some reason, these ponds were to fell or break. I don't want it going into anyone's front or backyard and being a mess. So right off the bat, the applicant and staff worked together to really define what would be a appropriate buffer from future proposed development and the sewer ponds that we have. And we believe we have found a pretty suitable standard, which, if this was to pass, we would use this as the future standard for any other development in that area, which is, we're going to go ahead and jump to that quick.
So this is south of town?
Correct. All right. So here's a nice illustrated version. So here we have a lot, which would be built upon, and then we have the sewer ponds here to the south, which are not illustrated. What we have is approximately 350-foot buffer, Mr. Makwa, or was it?
315.
315.
315, 315-foot buffer from the ponds to the actual homes. Within that 315-foot buffer, we are going to have future right-of-way for a future road, which we see right here. And then we have a landscaped area, which will have a berm and which will have trees, which is really designed as an area not for people to walk through. Really, we don't want people back right where this road ends. This is southwest Shaft Avenue, past the homes. Generally, it's not a place where we want people, but we want to make sure that it looks good, that we have trees, that we have some nice floor and fauna, and also a suitable berm, which helps with people not necessarily having a direct view of this lovely beachfront property. But it also serves as if anything was to fell. Not saying it was, they're in really excellent condition, but if it was, it does create a barrier where we are able to address any issue, fix the issue, without jeopardizing anyone's home. So that is the biggest thing from a staff level that I want you to know about, that we took under consideration. Other things that we're looking at is, again, this is an R4-zoned area. The minimum lot size is 5,000, I believe. When the applicant presents, he's going to show you that they have some various sized lots. They are on the smaller end, but it does meet city code or the R4 district. I can tell you that staff has reviewed the preliminary plat, and they meet our standards. In certain areas, they exceed some standards, which, again, I will allow the applicant to speak to. The applicant did complete a traffic impact study with that number of homes. It's a no-brainer, and what we saw from the traffic impact study is that at this time for that area, there aren't any improvements that need to be made as far as future lights, stop signs, et cetera, at this time. With that, that's kind of the brief facts as far as what staff has evaluated from the application. And, Mr. Chair, if it pleased you, I'd like to call up the applicant to give their portion of the presentation.
Yes, please. Come on up. I just need your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tim Makwa. I'm with Hayden Holmes, 1406 North Main Street, Suite 109 Meridian, A3642. Appreciate Brock's presentation. There are a couple of things I wanted to get to first, before I tackle the points you brought up. Being that this is Hayden Holmes' first entry into Mountain Home, I just kind of wanted to tell you a little bit about us before we get going on the meat of the presentation. Oops. So Hayden Holmes is a roughly more than 30-year-old company, started building in Oregon in, I believe it was 1989. And we have two regions in Oregon, the I-5 corridor and central Oregon, and we also have two regions in Washington, one that encompasses north Idaho into Washington, and one in the tri-cities area. And then in 2009, we started building here in Idaho, mostly in the Treasure Valley. We're currently developing communities from Caldwell to Eastern Boise, to Eagle, Starr, Middleton, Caldwell-Nampa, Emmett. And so we are also, just this year, started two communities in Twin Falls. So the logical next point is that we skipped over somehow there is Mountain Home. So we're excited about hopefully getting an approved project that we can proceed with building, developing, selling homes to, and helping fill what's a needed gap in the market. So one thing I wanted to point out that I think differentiates Hayden Holmes a little bit is that our founders are very committed to the idea of giving as you go. Hayden Watson, our company CEO, or Chairman of the Board, his parent, his father started the company, and it was very important to Robert and Virginia Watson, this give-as-you-go component. And so this year, we will build and close on our 105th, what we call, it's our first story, which is a nonprofit organization that builds homes. We solicit input or support from our trade partners, you know, framing, plumbing, electrical, even on the land side, so that we can provide an opportunity for somebody that otherwise wouldn't be able to afford a home. And we do this in every one of our regions every year. This year, we're building in Kuna. And so ultimately, it's somebody that's otherwise qualified, but may not have the credit score or the saved down payment, or perhaps a, through other circumstances, went through a bankruptcy and can't qualify for a home. So they've got to be, you know, employed and qualified, but it's an opportunity for 100, I think it's almost 110 families now, that otherwise wouldn't have been able to afford a home. So we've built a couple in Caldwell. This year's Kuna. We've built in Middleton. And so at some point, I know Mountain Home would be a candidate, obviously, for one of those opportunities. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. I, I mean, a lot of companies say it, but I really believe in our company, it goes all the way to the top, and 80% of our employees donate a portion of their, their income to this endeavor as well. So I think it's an important thing to know about our company. I did want to just show you just some of the samples of product type that would be built in Fall Creek. This is some of our larger two-story and three-story community, or homes, with three-car garage, RV garage is a possibility. We do have some 70-foot wide plus lots in here that would be candidates for this product line. We aren't a spec builder, so we don't go in, go in and build, pick 20 plans and build 20 plans. It's all on a pre-sold basis, so it's customer picks, selects what they want to build. So it's going to depend on where the market is, and what, you know, what level and square footage people are wanting to build. But that's the nice thing about Fall Creek, is we've got a flexibility, some flexibility with the varied-sized products. I think it's important, and it is another important component of Hayden Holmes, is to, to provide affordable, quality construction on detached, single-family, and that's all we do, is detached, single-family. So I, I kind of put air quotes on affordable, just because right now, as we all know, affordability's skyrocketed, and there's really nothing that's affordable, but it's relatively affordable compared to the, to our competitors in the market, and yet still maintaining that high quality that we find so important. So just some of the other home examples here, these are two-car type plans, two-story, both two-story and single-story. And then some of our smaller lineup that will go down to roughly 1,100 square foot with two-car garage. So given the, you know, the expansion, somebody mentioned that earlier, Micron, the airbase, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a need certainly for housing, and I've seen it in reviewing minutes from City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission in the past as well. This is just an example of some of the materials, the fit and finish of our interior homes. You know, there's a full range all the way through, depending on what the customer wants and, and feels they can afford. So I feel like we provide a really high-quality, yet on the affordable side, home product. So unless there's any questions with that, I kind of wanted to just get into a little bit more on what Brock was talking about. I'll roll through these pretty quick, but we are annexed, and the comp plan identifies this property as residential. You can see where, I don't know that there's a clicker that'll, or a highlighter that'll work. Mine doesn't show up on that, but you can see, I guess I can show it with the cursor. Can you see the cursor on the screen up there? No?
One of those was.
You think that was? Okay. Yeah. So here's the property, here's the property here, and it's within the comp plan, identified as residential. This is the Silver Creek, or Silver, Silverstone up here. And so we're proposing, just like Brock suggested, carry that development pattern on through. We've got two stub streets here that will, are set up to extend into this property. The sewage, city's, city's property with the sewage lagoons is to the south. As far as zoning, we are in the existing R4 zone with a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot. We're proposing an average of, it's 5,400, something and change, so roughly 5,500, proposing to meet all of these bulk density requirements of the, the R4 without any waivers to city code. So we're proposing to meet that. This is Section 979, bulk coverage and controls. It talks about the upper end and the lower end. I just wanted to point this out in the R4. We're proposing roughly 37 lots, or roughly 21%, 37 lots exceed the 5,700 square foot with 15 of the lots exceeding 6,400. Our smallest lot is just a little over 5,100, I believe, but for the most part, we're at 5,400 square foot on all the interior stuff. On our western boundary, we, we ring the site quite a bit with some of the larger lots to be more compatible with that undeveloped ground. Common open space, the city's requirement in code, 916, is 5% of the gross land area. We're proposing 18% of the gross land area, and that's for the most part because of the 315-foot buffer, excuse me, on the south side. This is just a look at our proposed phasing. We wanted to get five phases, to try to get five roughly 32 to 37-lot phases, so that roughly one phase per year could be developed while we're building and selling in the other phase. So we see this as a five-year build-out, with the caveat that the market's going to drive that, you know, obviously to a large part. This is just showing our development data, along with just a brief, or a pretty simple color diagram, but we're proposing 176 lots. Again, our average lot size is, size is right around that 5,500, 40.12 acres total. So I wanted to point out a couple of other things just real quick. We are proposing, given this our first endeavor in Mountain Home, and we want to be a good neighbor. When we first met with staff, we talked about a, a need that they potentially had with the, the fire department. So we're proposing a .45-acre lot here, within that non-bill agreement, that would be dedicated to the city after plat recording for fire department use, and I think that the proposed use was staging equipment or storing equipment. So we wanted to do that. We also agreed that we would extend a waterline main through to our south boundary that could be used by the, the city. I think there was a need for water service on that south end. So now getting to the, to the odor issue, or the sewage lagoon, this is a cross-section that our landscape architect put together. So the berm here, within that 315 feet, is 12-foot high, and we've particularly, especially identified a lot of evergreen here as a mitigation for the, for the odor, as well as the visual. So we've got a 12-foot berm, plus a fairly densely planted berm through here. This, this 315 point, I wanted to clarify one point Brock gave. The 315 feet is from the, this is the fence, existing fence on the property line between us and the city. And then this is the property line at the back of these lots, so right, right here. So it's actually, there's the 15-foot setback, and then these, the, the actual ponds are a little bit further south of the, so it's more, it's more than 315. It may be 350. So I just wanted to point that out, just as a clarification, but we are also trying to be sensitive to the water usage on this, on this. So for the most part, these are going to be surfaced, this area would be surfaced with a landscape gravel or a road mix, and minimizing the amount of landscape here and focusing the landscape up on the berm where it's going to have the most impact for mitigation of potential odor. From our prior meetings with staff, it seemed like the, the most opportunity for odor was when the ponds were turned over, and I'm not sure exactly what that, that's like a couple of times a year, Rich. And so what we've also agreed that we will incorporate is into our closing documents. Anytime somebody buys, they're going to have to acknowledge, we're going to provide them information, and they're going to acknowledge that they're next to a sewage lagoon, and that there is a potential for periodic odor intrusion, so that at least they're on, they're on notice that that is a potential risk. But as far as mitigating it, we're, we're proposing, like I said, the berm, and we also have a pretty high standard on our building controls, as far as caulking and windows and different things we can do at the eaves and at the attic access, some of those kind of things. So we're open to any of the, does that kind of cover? So just in summary, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but yeah, we want to be a good neighbor. We're proposing that we would donate a .45-acre lot for the fire department use. We construct that water main on the south. The biggest points, I think, are that this site has already been annexed and zoned R4, so the city's master plan and, and planned use concept contemplated this as a residential with 5,000-square-foot minimum lots. So that's what we're proposing to do. We had quite a bit of discussion early on, I think, in our meetings about potentially going with a PUD and higher density, but being our first experience in Mountain Home, we wanted to just try the path of least resistance and see how things, see how things worked out. The proposed community meets the goals and objectives of the city's comp plan. I've appreciated everything with the staff and, and being accessible to meet and talk through this and work it out. I feel like we've got a pretty good product before you tonight. And so, yeah, with the Micron expansion and the airbase, we feel like it's obviously a need here, and hopefully we'll be able to help fill some of that need. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions, or, or I don't know how, what your normal process is, if you want to wait till?
Well, what we'll do is, well, we're going to have you step back, and then we're going to open it up for the public hearing, and then we'll just invite you back up, and we're all done with that.
Okay.
So appreciate it. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Before we get into the public hearing, I know that water is on everybody's mind. I'm going to do my best, Rich, you're going to help me out whenever I fail at this, to kind of do a public education moment with this. Current numbers that we have, we need to, when we look at EDUs, we look at what we currently have available, and we also look at what we have already planned. What we have planned and what we have available are two totally different things. It is based on the developer to come in and get all of their, their paperwork completed in time in order to be given the EDUs that they have already been planned for. If they drag their feet and they don't get their paperwork done in time and we run out of EDUs, they don't get approved. That's how it works. So with a specific amount of EDUs that have been set, we can have developers come in all day long and say, "Hey, this is what we want to do," and we can go, "Sounds great." But if they don't do anything in the process to get themselves to where they can develop, then the EDUs stay where they're at until we get the paperwork. Rich, do you want to add anything to that, or?
Well, I think that, no, Chairman, I think you hit that pretty much. I think it's more, more also that, like, when we get new wells online, EDUs go up, and, you know, we're planning for the future, and that's where we are. So, you know, if we like, you're probably going to say there's a deficit, but we don't plan on 2,000 homes coming in tomorrow. Like, this is a five-year phase, so that's part of your guys' job and our job, to make sure that when, when developments come on phase like they asked to, then they'll be able to have the water. Some, they won't, we know that some of these things that we've, that you guys have approved will probably never come to fruition. So those are things to think about, too.
And you, you mentioned the deficit, and that is a deficit based on the permitted plans that we have, but that does not mean that the developers have come in and actually put in their paperwork. So the current standing from the paper, I think you handed me tonight, Rich, or Brock, one of the two, is we have currently 1,586 EDUs that are available. Okay? That means the deficit that Rich was talking about is, out of all of the plans that we have already approved, whether it's planning and zoning, whether it's City Council, we are in a deficit of negative 616. That does not include the well that is currently in production. However, the negative 616 doesn't matter if the developers do not come and get their paperwork taken care of. That's how the EDUs work. So that negative 616 doesn't come into play, because once we run out of water, or the EDUs, excuse me, then developers do not get their, their paperwork signed off by the city. Hopefully, that addresses any of the water situations and water issues. And again, I strongly encourage you to get with either Rich or get with either Brock, have those conversations, kind of educate yourself a little of how the water works in, in the city, because we know that it's a very big deal. And we want to, we, we understand it's a concern from the community. It's, it's a concern throughout all of Elmore County, to be honest with you. So we hear you, but we just want you to understand how the EDUs work within the city. So with that, I will then go ahead and open it up to the public hearing for the preliminary plat for Tim Makwa. Well enough. The only thing I need from you is name, address, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Well, I, one of the clarification on the statements you just made before I make my comments, and that is, when were those EDUs calculated?
Just now. Stay there today.
Today. So based on today's climate factors and the current status of the aquifer?
Well, I mean, so we have, what was it, 5, would you say?
1,586.
So the water available that we can pump out of right now is that, we can, so that's how many houses that we can pump out with water at this, today? If we had all those, we could pump it out.
Okay, so that, that's assuming a constant state, not taking into effect climate change, and the declining aquifer, and the fact that Anderson Reservoir is down, flood lateral, way down this year. Okay, that's, that's what I was curious about.
Okay. Do you have, do you have anything else about the plat?
I have some, but I'd like to compose my thoughts.
Okay.
It's just a single question.
Come on up.
Jason Greca, address 665 Southwest Ray Allen Street. All right, questions? I got three of them. Hopefully, they're quick. First one I'll lead off with is education. 176 units, single families, that's adding 176 families to our education right now. I don't know about you guys, but I have a lot of friends that are teachers. They're struggling right now. Schools are struggling. How are we going to address that? Like, what is, what's the question there? Have we brought it to Marty Anderson, to any of the military liaisons to say, "Hey, how is this going to impact?" Because he's talking about the airbase. Have we talked to them and said, "Hey, how's this going to impact our education system? What, what risks are we inviting into the area?" The second thing is the egress/ingress from Fifth West, or South Fifth West Street. That's a one-way in and out. There's a lot of people that use that road. It's 25 miles per hour. It is getting beat up. There is no turn lanes. There are blind spots everywhere. Like, if we're going to add a, yes, I'll, can you tell me where that was again?
The, the road, Fifth, South Fifth West?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. South Fifth Street. Like, there's a lot of blind spots. There's a lot of stop-and-go traffic. There's a lot of, I mean, I've been hit, I run out there every morning. I've been hit, or almost been hit a couple of times, because there's just blind spots, and there's a lot of traffic, because we have a lot of new families there. We're adding 176. That's
Because we have a lot of new families there, we're adding 176, that's a lot more people, a lot more traffic going to, you know, working back and forth and plus the bus traffic too, because there's going to be more buses. The third thing, the one I haven't seen at all is, you know, we have great parks in Mountain Home. I love the parks in Mountain Home, but we have none on that side of town. We have zero. So I would love to see maybe an action plan or an idea for a park to come into that area. Because we have the two, you can call them parks, they're more like ponds because they flow up with water when it gets really rainy and in the winter, they're not usable. There's a little bit of equipment on the north side of the one, but that's it. So I would really like to see that. I have kids, I know, like, everybody has kids in that subdivision, I know tons. And there's nowhere to play, they play in the streets. And we know that's not safe, so let's give them somewhere to play. So, and that's, I will finish my comments up for that.
First.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ooh, I got to sign in.
Come on up. Will Runyon, 2573 Northeast Reservoir Road. In the past, we've had a large problem with the construction out there, with construction trash. My wife has picked up, literally, this is not a figure of speech, truckloads of building debris. My question to the contractor here, or the developer, I want to know what his trash plan is. Does the trash plans that work in Ada County and Kenya County, they don't work here because of the wind. They build four-by-four containers out of leftover plywood. They don't have tops on them, they go into our fields. My wife has spent countless hours picking up trash. We went to the city with not much resolve, we went to planning and zoning with not much resolve. She finally got resolved by Facebook and phone calls to the developers, Hubbell and Corey Barton. Now, I'm not blaming him, he's the first, he's just into town. But I would like a laid-out trash plan, how he's going to keep his construction debris off of our property. It's a windy place. There is local contractors here. I didn't ask them to use their name, so I'm not going to use their name. Their job sites are impeccable, clean, it can be done. These developments, I don't care for them, but people have to have someplace to live. They're here, they're coming, you know, they're necessary evil. But for us to pick up truckloads of other people's trash is unacceptable. And going back to the road that the other gentleman mentioned, the road, the road's pretty beat up out there. They paved half of it, the other side is original. The road's pretty beat up, and we're fixing to put a lot more concrete trucks, a lot more heavy equipment. That road's going to need to be rebuilt. The city does need to take that into account. This is going to cost the city some money. It is going to need to be rebuilt. You know, and we've got five years of construction from, you know, one phase a year. So we have five years of trash blowing around that I would like to know how they are going to contain their trash on their job site. So that's what I have.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Guess I'll do this right this time, give my name. My name is Terry Pearson Ramirez, 670 Southwest Rayland. And I guess, comment to the smell out there, maybe you should have come out two nights ago on Rayland Street, which is the last street of development, it smells out there. And so I have a concern of, I guess, building smaller houses down near there, you're basically building lower-income houses next to a sewer pond. So in my mind, you have an environmental justice issue. Those property values are going to degrade quicker, they're going to trash out quicker. And it's going to then take out the property values, but you're also, you're selling to a clientele who cannot afford to live in the non-smelly part of town. You have a noise issue out there with proximity to all of Mountain Home, with the railroad. But I guess noise, I know I'm rambling here. Five years of construction, people showing up at 6:00 in the morning, radios blaring, pounding, going till dark at night, needs to be limits on when they can construct or when they at least have to do quiet construction. We shouldn't have to listen to the noise in the neighborhoods. My solution back to the odor thing, you know, tying in that gentleman's parks, would that strip next to the sewer ponds be better serviced as a park? And then you're backing your houses away, because putting a 12-foot berm and waiting 20 years for evergreen trees to grow up to any size and density, you're basically using a 12-foot berm to mitigate your smell and it's not going to work. And I'm a forester by training, so I can tell you trees take time to grow. And if you pack them in at a density, you're likely to lose them because they won't grow well. So, you know, I also have concerns, and like I said, this is not specific to this gentleman's proposal. This is overall city proposal, because I've been seeing these all over town, you can see, I collect them, is that police response time, you know, already, we get great patrols out there, but basically the guy comes down the street, maximizes the speed limit, goes down the street, down the street, down the street. How many more can we put on before we have to bring on additional EMS, police, do our medical services, as mentioned, do the schools? Is the city-county's plan comprehensive enough to look at this explosive growth? I mean, the population of this town has doubled, you know, recently, you know, since when that first water study was done that I looked up and touched. So I'm just, is the planning documents keeping up with the growth of this town and the projected needs for schools, EMS, police and such? So I know that wasn't very coherent, but thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Chair. Anybody else? Come on up.
My name's Brian Freer, I live in, live at 2146 East McKenna Drive, Boise, Idaho, 83716. I grew up probably closest to the sewer lagoons than anybody here. And I'm out there a lot because my family has a farm and I have cattle out there too a lot of time. And I'm out right beside the sewer lagoons where my cattle are. And I have never had a problem with smells there. Like I said, I grew up there and I never had a problem with that. I'm out there all the time, that's still, that's a second home to me right there. I mean, right by the sewer lagoons, and I've just wanted to point out that I've never had a problem with smells there like that. And this is a nice area out there. And we've never had a problem with trains either, you know, that kind of stuff, because we're away from the trains there. And that's all I have to say for, you know, I wanted to just say that I've never had a smell problem.
Okay, thanks, Brock.
Thank you, Ed.
Anybody else? I was looking for you, Mr. King.
Waiting for me, oh, shoot. Misty Pierce, because of my hearing, I don't know if it's been brought up because I couldn't hear a lot of the people. My biggest worry, I don't live in that area, but is the ponds going to be blocked off with a fence? We don't need a child drowning.
Yes, one.
Running through the parks, chasing loose dogs or through the backside of the berm, chasing a loose animal, crawling the ponds, drowned, we don't need that. And then my other concern is, are these houses going to sell that close to the sewer ponds? Because it's pretty stinky out there some days. Those are the only two concerns I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, sitting down, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for that. Tim, why don't you go ahead and come back up? Before you do go ahead and get started on anything here, I will address the education of schools. I'm going to strongly encourage anybody, especially you, sir, go have a conversation with Mr. Gilbert because every single time a development comes in, he has given a letter from the city and asks for input of anything. Most of the time, Brock, what are you giving?
I, usually I'll do a presentation of them every quarter or so.
Okay, and is James, Mr. Gilbert said anything to you?
He's very receptive. You know, the way the state statute is when it comes to building brick-and-mortar facilities, it really inhibits us, let's just build a school now because we know the growth's coming. It's very difficult.
Oh, go ahead.
And I would just add, I believe him, just like all the other amazing teachers we have, they are going to say they will meet the moment regardless, which I hope that we can sooner rather than later provide better facilities. But it's really something outside of the city's control as far as the jurisdiction, outside of us being able to notice the school district of growth that is happening and then to have conversations whenever they approach us.
Jeff, so, Mr. Chair, did the city of Mountain Home send a notice to Mountain Home School District about this proposal?
Correct.
Did the Mountain Home School District send us any written testimony? Is there anyone from the school district present tonight? Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Can I add something?
No. Can't, sorry. So I just want to make sure, address that. Misty, coming down to the ponds and the fence, Brock?
We do currently have a fence. So there's currently a fence. Our security has been pretty well off. I think Rich could speak to if we've ever had any circumstances where we've had people getting in there.
Not that I know of. There's, yeah, there's a fence around all of the whole property.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Regarding two of the comments, one is, so the education, the school district was afforded the opportunity to comment and pass. The second is regarding Mr. Runyon's comment about construction debris. Mountain Home City Code 5112 provides that builders are required to keep, I recall this because we passed it, talking to Mr. Yerkey, we passed this during my first term on the city council. All construction sites within the city of Mountain Home shall have a trash container onsite of sufficient size to accommodate the debris for that project. All lightweight construction debris, including cardboard boxes, product wrapping, waste material, including trash, will be placed in it and no lightweight debris shall be placed in the ground. And here's the enforcement mechanism, and the city's building official will issue a stop-work order for violations in the section. And so if something like that happens, we bring it to their attention. And I'm the city prosecutor as well, so if you need me to talk. Then the third issue regarding noise is covered with Mountain Home City Code 775, or, I'm sorry, seven, yeah, 775 maximum nighttime sound levels, which reduce the standard residential decibel level of 80 decibels to 65 between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. And the police department does have decibel meters in their cars, and so if the... What's that?
Was it 65, as you said, the decibels?
Yeah, so at, in a residential zone, the receiving property can receive no more than 80 decibels during the day, but between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, it's reduced by 15 decibels, so it makes it 65. So if there's noise occurring due to construction or whatever, again, in a residential zone, then that's covered.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay, what happens if Mr. Will is finding issues with the development and there's trash everywhere? Who does he go to?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I have the opportunity to work with the code enforcement department and what they do. I apologize if any ball has been dropped before. I can tell you that the staffing has been expanded. Most recently, we have some pretty good enforcement officers that have been on their game pretty well for the last couple of months. I would invite anyone, if they see anyone who is, they don't have a clean place, if you're picking up trash and it's continual, I, we have a system to report it and try to find remedy. So we have cards of our new code enforcement officer right here. We'll make sure those get distributed. And once again, I always apologize if we come up short, please feel free to give us another chance and always feel free to give us a phone call or come visit us. We'll always do our best to make sure that things get made to how they should be.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, commissioners, it's kind of the same thing with dust. So a lot of times we get people, neighborhoods call in and call Public Works and we'll go out there and stop the work until they get their water truck and get everything watered down. So we get dusty and wind blows and so we see that. So those are things we work on, so if you have questions, those are things we consider.
Okay. With that, I've said my piece, you two have anything?
No, you?
No, I think everything's been addressed in our commentary here. Obviously fencing is a concern, especially for the southernmost property to that. I think everything that I could come up with is, has been covered.
Sure, I don't mean to interrupt, I do know that there was concern about the state of Southwest West. We do recognize that that road is becoming more and more traveled. The southwest part of town is where we're seeing the majority of the growth. Per code, the roadway that is adjacent to the development, they're on the hook for building half the roadway. Obviously, what does that do for the other half? That's when we have our master transportation plans that we're actually going to be working on this year. We're going to be updating it for the first time in a very long time. So I invite anyone who wants really nice roads to come be part of that. But as far as the current state traffic, everything we're finding, we have an engineered TIS that's stamped by an engineer saying that it is sufficient. Does that mean it's in the most excellent condition? Not at all, that it can accommodate said traffic. To ask anything more of the developer would be outside of our code. I believe the conversation after that is then, what is city's policy as far as redoing our streets, prioritizing those? And how I would answer that is, we are currently updating our master transportation plan. We're doing a hard look at all of the developments that have been recently approved. We take all of the traffic impact studies that have recently been done, we compile them and then we start bettering the infrastructure that we have. So I just wanted to provide some sort of answer, it may not be the answer that was desired, but I didn't want to leave it unnoticed.
Jeff?
We adopted, the city council adopted the new development impact fee schedule?
Correct.
Okay, so with specific regard to streets and parks, those are covered with development impact fees? I believe parks, is there a park impact fee?
There is a parks impact fee for the...
Okay, so regarding capital improvements to support the development, those two things are on there?
Okay.
As its fire and police.
May I make a comment about the smell? So currently our RE21, which is our real estate purchase and sale agreements, now make reference, as of 2021, now make reference to nuisances caused by farming. And those nuisances do include basically whatever you smell downwind. And it references Title 22, Chapter 45, Right to Farm. So I'm just giving you that, that to look up. But anyways, it basically is telling us that that, the smell is not necessarily a nuisance. And I can tell you, I probably smell more manure than I do, because we live in Silverstone. We smell more downwind manure than we smell the actual ponds.
Chairman? Sir?
A quick question. In regard to Ms. Pearson Ramirez's comment, I just wanted to ask Brock if we can maybe give a brief overview of how often the comp plan and studies that she was referencing in her questions about how are we keeping up with studies, the comp plan as it progresses through the years versus our growth and development, more of an educational rundown than anything?
So the comp plan is actually fairly new. It was completed in 2020, I think it was adopted January 2021. Fairly new document. All of the data we have is fairly contemporary. I think one thing that the comp plan doesn't have right now is all of the new developments that we've done. You know, when we talk about the 2,000 or so dwelling units that have been proposed. But that doesn't mean we can't amend the comp plan, that doesn't mean that we, when it, but we can only amend the comp plan per state statute, again, only a certain number at times a year. So generally, we'll do a... at times a year. So, generally, we'll do an annual audit of our comp plan. This year would be the first year that we do the annual audit, just because we have a brand-new plan. Again, if anyone wants some awesome reading, it actually isn't too dry, our comp plan. It's actually very, fairly great, and I would welcome any comment that any member of the public has of how it can be, be better. It did win a planning award, which I am kind of proud of. That doesn't mean it's perfect, but we do welcome public input and know that as this development is happening, that we are going to reevaluate it. Another plan that I mentioned, which isn't the comprehensive plan, is the master transportation plan. That was last done in 2009. So, I'm very excited to be getting on that and to be updating that, not only for transportation in general with roadways, but, you know, we've been talking a lot about kids and safety and parks and getting to school. The city just adopted a master pathways plan last year with this concept that maybe, yes, green space is cool, but linear parks, like really awesome pathways where kids can ride their bikes and get exercise, that's really cool, too. I can tell you, that's something that the city leadership team and the mayor, they have expressed as, maybe that's something we can have more of on the south part of town, being that we've kind of overbuilt our parks. We have a lot of green space. So, that's my long-short answer to it. We do have plans. The comprehensive plan's very contemporary, and we do have an annual review coming up. Generally, we do that during the winter months as construction slows down. We're going to get a look, look at it. This is the first time I have an assistant city planner. So, being able to delegate some of those and being able to take a good look at it and then come to this body if we see any changes that need to be made is something that we should be expecting in the coming months.
Thank you.
To jump in really quick, I was just messaged by Commissioner Roder who has a question.
You okay?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay, okay. A couple of things I want to bring up that citizens talked about. One was the parks. Are there any, I know we get impact fee and a new impact fee allows for parks development. Is there anything on the books?
You're trailing off, Billy. Where'd you go? You're trailing off. Say it again.
And there any, I know parks were brought up a few times from the citizen. Are there any future plans or anything on the books about building a park down in Fifth West area?
Mr. Chair. So, having, as a proud resident of that side of town as well, I have seen the rock quarry, which is called a park, which, which we do know that we want to implement better parks. That's a conversation that staff has had at length of, this is something that we don't want to replicate. And also, when we do a park, we want to do the park right. We've recognized that we've had opportunities, not only with this development, but with other developments, to do these little pocket parks. And really, what we're looking at long-term is what does a regional park, it probably won't be as big as Legacy. It probably won't be as big as some of those Paramount parks. But what does a actually good-sized park look at the south side of town and where does it go? I can tell you that staff does have an idea of where the future, where a future park like that can go, that we've been speaking with other developers in the area of this is where we think it could be, where we could get some decent acreage, where we could even potentially share park space with a potential school facility, too, to help curb the cost for our taxpayers, which would be really great. There is something in the stars right now. Really, it's going to be pushed by development and everything that goes on. But I can tell you, it's not the city's prerogative anymore to build subpar parks, to build parks that we know are used for water drainage, or just to build a tiny pocket park that has one swing on it. And we know that we got to be good stewards, because right now, even though we have more parks per capita than almost any other city in the state, they're all on the right side. They're all on the north side of town. Water's an issue. We have to be cognizant of it. So, I can tell you that on the south side of town, there's been talks with the city team that for a future good-sized regional park, maybe we have a better robust trail system. Well, I shouldn't say better, but maybe that's more of a priority for that area. And/or maybe future rec center indoor facilities that don't necessarily have a high water utilization. Again, anyone who's very interested in that types of stuff, I really, I'm glad we have someone that knows about trees and plants and flora and fauna. I would invite you most definitely, if you see things that are comp plan or in our capital improvement plan, which is where we want all these impact fees to go, and you see a void of how they can be used better, we would take that input all day.
Okay. Commissioner Roder would also like to ask Public Works, what is Fifth West rated?
Level of service.
Level of service?
I just have to, I just have to summary. So, I don't have it right here in front of me. I just have the summary.
Okay.
So, it's probably going to be, I don't, if it's, if there's no deficiencies, it's going to be above a C. Full buildout is still going to be above a C.
Above the C? Okay, at full buildout. Okay. Billy, do you have any more questions?
Being a C, it should be an impact.
I'm just guessing on those. I don't have, I don't have their full study in front of me.
Can't hear you, buddy.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Just stare at the screen that close, you'll be fine.
There's a couple of laughs. There's a couple of questions regarding the police and fire. With the additional homes, will there be a degradation of city services due to the number of houses?
So, I'm just going to repeat your question. So, is there any degradation of city services based on the development?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chair says no.
Then the last, then the last question is brought up by one citizen. I know that we can't answer this. Retail value, does Brock have any experience, historical knowledge of any area built around this type of lagoons that impacted the housing market, based on his experience at past cities?
That would be outside of my knowledge of how that plays into effect. You know, I think there are some logical inferences that can be made and that were made. I think it would really depend, and, you know, this body has the discretion to try to establish what is the odor ratio. I don't know how you measure odor. I think that's the word of the day. But if it was significant with the standards of approving a preliminary plat, you know, health, safety, everything involved with the community, that, that is a component that you could explore more. It's just, how do we measure it?
Well, I mean, if that, if that were, I would say if that's a big deterrent, then colonial estates would cease to exist, because colonial estates has a retaining pond right behind it as well. And it has a berm. So, and they're also really close to the railroad. So, if that is really going to be something that's going to affect it so much, then those houses should have never been there. And they have been there for quite some time, and people still purchase houses in that area. Now, as far as value is concerned, does it retain value maybe as much as living in Silverstone? Probably not. In fact, no. But, you know, that's, that's just what it is. It's location. It's the first rule of real estate.
Can't answer. Say, future 10, 20 years from now, that that's a non-desirable area.
I don't see that part of the city giving that down, because, can you hear me?
Barely.
That no one would want to live. I'm going to ask that question. Is due to, say, 20 years from now, looking at future state, that if it was a undesirable location and a undesirable house, and it wouldn't get, you know, unoccupied and vacant, that, if that, that's a huge factor or not? That was kind of just a curiosity question.
Well, I'll just jump in on that and say, I hope that in 20 years from now, Mountain Home has a better water treatment system plant than what we got right now. So, that's, that's my hopes on that. So, anything else, Billy?
No, no. Sorry for the internet.
No, you're good. Next time, Billy, okay?
Yeah. We must sign boundary duties.
Commission, any, any other thing, anything else? Anything for Mr. Makwa?
No. I think Mr. Makwa's given us quite a presentation, a good product to look at, very charitable for the, for the acreage for the fire department. We appreciate that. Yeah, that's it for me.
Anything from you?
No, I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to respond to any of these? I mean, your discussion pretty much went through all of it. I think the only thing on the odor I was going to point out is that our north boundary is the south boundary of Silverstone. So, I think we're talking within a couple hundred feet, potentially as much as 800 feet or. So, I think if you're talking about odor intrusion, if we're getting it, Silverstone probably would as well, I would think. And so, we also heard from Mr. Freer, who's grew up in the area, and, you know, that's anecdotal, anecdotal, but I think he's going to probably have as good a sense as anyone. No pun intended there. And so, I'm a landscape architect regarding the trees, so the 12-foot berm, and, you know, these are going to be seven-to-eight-foot evergreens. So, we're talking about roughly 20-foot at planting. So, we, it's not as long of an impact as I wouldn't expect a 20-year, that it's going to take 20 years to see a solid vegetative mitigation. There were some good points brought up. I appreciate Mr. Runyon's comments. I don't think it, it is, I think it is unacceptable to be picking up other people's trash. I want to point out, I live in a Hayden home that, so it's a newer community as well. There are times when, you know, you can be as diligent as possible, but there's times, just like with the dust, that you get caught off guard with wind. We do our best to, to avoid those circumstances. We have regular cleanings by our, our employees directing their trades to clean up daily upon leaving. But I think it's an excellent point on the trash boxes and not having loose material in those things. I, so I can, I definitely sympathize. I would, I would like to just say that we all grew, we all live in a place that had to be constructed and had to have materials delivered. And so, there is a little bit of, we need to, we need to realize that we were creating the same nuisance for someone else in years past. But I think he makes excellent points, and, and I certainly will take that back to our superintendents. As far as, and I apologize, I didn't catch your name, low-income next to sewage lagoons, I would disagree with that, because I'm very aware of our quality of product. I know that it's probably not the most desirable. But I think it's, it's providing homeownership for opportunities for a lot of people. And those, that range of income throughout that, doesn't mean they shouldn't have an opportunity. So, I think we're providing an opportunity there. Kristi, I didn't catch her last name. She's concerned that we're not going to be able to sell homes. I share her concern. That's my, you know, that's a, not because of the ponds, just because of, that's the nature of the, you know, we see ups and downs in the market, and we're in a down right now. So, the ponds are fenced. There's a six-foot chain link with three-strand barbed wire at the top. So, it's fenced completely. So, anyway, that's it. I just wanted, and then back to the EDU point, Mr. Chairman, keep in mind, it's going to be probably two years plus before the first toilet flushes in, in Fall Creek if we are fortunate enough to get approval this year. So, a lot can happen in that amount of time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I do want to just say on record that I appreciate that as a new developer coming in, you looked at the comp plan, you looked at all of our codes, and you just went like, yeah, we're just going to meet them and not ask for anything more. And I really appreciate that, especially from this board up here. I mean, it's, it's a fresh air when freshmen coming in our way. So...
The next one, I'll push the envelope.
Then I'll be the new chairman. Commission, do you want to make a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request for the Fall Creek subdivision preliminary plat consisting of 40 acres south of the Silverstone Number Two subdivision, currently zoned as R4, RPA 4S06E015400, application PZ 2292. Subject to the site plan amendments required by the building, Public Works fires zoning officials to comply with the applicable city codes and standards. Final plat and future development will comply with the uses and bulk coverage controls provided in the attachments, Number Two, Proposed Plan Unit Agreement. And before final plat is recorded, the applicant shall receive all necessary approvals regarding water sewer infrastructure from the Central Health District.
Ken, first, or a second?
Second.
Second for Christine. We'll start with you, Scott.
Aye.
Hi.
Billy, I need you to say aye or nay.
Aye.
Say again.
He said aye.
He said aye, okay. Do you have something before I vote?
Did we use the vernacular plan unit development in that motion?
Uh, there is in the...
Yeah, he read his staff report.
Proposed Plan Unit Agreement as Number Two.
That is a script under there that needs to be removed. It is not a plan unit development. So, if we could just re-motion, just a preliminary plat in the R4 district.
Okay. Perfect. In that case, then, I'll go back to you.
I will modify my motion and provide, beginning at Portion Two, the final plat and all future development will comply with the uses and bulk coverage controls, and we will leave it without the plan statement.
Okay. So, I'll go back down line again. Got it. First by Scott, second by Christina. Scott?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
And aye from you as well. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Moving down to our next item that we have tonight is conditional use permit for our mobile food truck yard. The applicant is Yard, the Yard Idaho LLC from William Hodges. A request for conditional use permit to allow food truck, court, and community food concession yard. Johnny Behind the Box would be designed for movable objects such as food and beverage trucks, mobile seating, portable containers, tables, and chairs, temporary shades, toilets, and transportable trash containers. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, those who have sat on this commission for a little bit longer than others will probably understand the story of how we got there, basically where we are today with this proposed use and with the applicant. And I think the history is very important. We have provided that as a portion in your staff report. I hope all of you have the opportunity to read that. I just want to go over a brief summary. So, what we are looking at is we have the subject property, which is right here. It's right off of American Legion Boulevard.
Your thing, isn't it?
Here, you got the wrong gizmo.
There's the right gizmo. Thank you very much. That's just Brock talking to himself. Here we have the subject property. It's right off of American Legion Boulevard. It's currently been utilized as a mobile food concessions yard for probably the span of two, maybe a year and a half, two years or so. How it ended up securing this use was, at first, the applicant chose to do a temporary use, which required them to do a conditional use permit. Now, with a temporary use, there's a lifespan on it of only six months. The applicant was interested in going this route, because another thing about this property is it is in the middle of floodway. So, we all know about flood plain. Floodway is very important, because that is, when it happens, that's where the waters are going to rush. That's, that's where FEMA has predicted that that is the place, which means that in order to build permanent structures, permanent buildings, make permanent improvements here is very difficult. You have to work with FEMA. You have to get special permitting. So, the applicant believed it was his best interest and for the businesses that wish to conduct commerce there, to do a temporary use permit, which is not requiring sort of permanent improvement to what they want to do. So, that's what they pursued. After they did that, the applicant realized that unless mobile food concession yards were a permanent use, they would have to do a temporary use permit every year. So, then, the applicant worked with staff, and the applicant actually approached city council before pursuing a zoning title amendment to make a mobile food concessions yard of permanent land use, which the applicant did. It's something that they paid for. Staff offered our input of what they did, but that was funded by the applicant. They paid for the public notices, everything else. They paid for the public notices, everything else. That ultimately was passed. So, now, within our use chart as a conditional use in the C3 district where the subject property is, we have mobile food concession yards. Now, after that, the applicant needs to submit his conditional use permit in order to operate fully. The applicant, from staff's perspective, we have never had a pause. We have always kept going to the next step, even though sometimes it may have been slower. And one of the biggest reasons that it's important that this is a conditional use permit specifically for the applicant is the conditional use permit allows to deviate from certain property development standards. So, for this use right now, we have specific design standards for a mobile concessions yard, which is outlined in your staff report. The applicant realizes that he is in the floodway, that there are certain things, unless the applicant were to receive additional approvals from state and federal authorities, that he would have to meet those before any permanent improvements are made. So, what the applicant is asking for is to be able to pursue this use without making permanent improvements, notably paving the property, permanent light fixtures, a permanent parking lot, which is all customary for the C3 district. You guys have seen other properties along there. It would be expected normally that he would meet the same standards of Walmart or Roche Outlet or Taco Bell when it comes to the site improvements. However, and I'll let the applicant present further on it, as a portion of his conditional use permit, he would like to be allowed, given the properties in the floodway... Is in the floodplain, excuse me, that they be able to make certain deviations so that they can operate on the property without making permanent improvement. And with that, I would yield my time over to the applicant.
Okay. Come on up.
Thanks, Brock, for that summary of the project that we've been working on for some time. I might buy William Hodges or Bill Hodges 2540 South Apple Street, Boise. By way of history, I've run that property for 27 years. I originally purchased the property, which included the medical clinic and the rest of the vacant land back in 1995. I purchased it really with the intent of developing the medical clinic. This was all remainder property, and so, because of floodway issues, I haven't been able to develop it. Now, it's been basically cut up into three, actually, three lots. This is Lot One here, extending back to this fence line. This is Lot Two, which is where the medical clinic sits here, and this is Lot Three, which is actually elevated, as is the medical clinic. So, this portion of the property could be built on, but because of access issues and a lot of complicated aspects of this property, I haven't been able to do anything to date with that. So, over the years, in trying to determine, you know, what I could do with the property, the popularity of these food truck courts has increased. I got really enthused by what I saw with some other food truck courts throughout the country. In our last presentation, we actually had a little video of one food truck court in Texas that was... There is very popular and incorporates food trucks and entertainment. And we got a lot of enthusiastic response to that concept. So, we proceeded with the temporary permit, and because of the... I think just by virtue of the fact that it's temporary, we have not been able to gain any real traction with the project. It's temporary. Without knowing that it's going to be there for longer than six months, you know, we haven't been able to attract a lot of food trucks. So, as a result, with the help of the planning department and Brock, and with this new conditional use permit applicability, I should say, we have decided to try to work with the city to make it a more permanent use of the property. With regard to the flood issues, it is... I think the FEMA map dates back to 1993. It's within the floodway, not just a flood zone, but a floodway. And that was all based on the fact that at the time, the reservoir in Rattlesnake Creek, Rattlesnake Creek basically spilled into this property. Since then, Rattlesnake Creek has been diverted, and there really... From a practical standpoint, there really is no floodway issue with the property because conditions have changed with the diversion of that creek. Also, FEMA, they define a floodway as a stream channel and the areas adjacent to the stream channel. There is no stream channel that goes through the property. So, in the future, I'll be working with engineers, and hopefully, the city will want to participate in that endeavor because the city actually owns the property just to the north, and the city faces the same floodway issues that I do as far as doing any development. And I think it's slated for down the road, slated for expansion of the cemetery, but under the current FEMA guidelines, you couldn't put a tombstone or grave marking because you can't impede the floodway with any permanent structure. So, we'll be looking at that down the road. So, we thought this would be a good use for property that has been sitting vacant forever. Lot of development around it. Mountain Home is growing. The popularity of the food truck concept is growing. People love it. By adding music, events, and beverage services, and games, and family-type of activities, we think that it can be successful, and it will certainly be a vast improvement over the vacant property that we've all had to look at for so many years. So, with that, I conclude my comments.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and have you step back, and I'll just open it up to our public hearing. Anybody who would like to come up and speak to this? Yeah, come on up. Need your name and address.
Yes, it is.
Perfect.
I did the whole thing. Okay. If you look at this thing here, I live on the corner of 18th and American Legion.
Could you state your name?
My name is Gail Grofson. I live at 1810 American Legion Boulevard. I have my name right there.
There you go.
And they blessed me with a light that constantly is going off all the time at night when the wind barrels down 18th. The backside here of the property that he has, there is the mortuary, and they have services that they're doing all the time, and that isn't public access on the backside. The only access that he has is from American Legion, okay? And on... I got this in the mail, and it says, "Future Bike Park." We have one in Mountain Home, which is over at Richard DeGerry, that has all the things. And it says here, "Trailer Stage," okay? I can hear barely, depending on which way the wind blows, Carmelo, when they have the big fiestas and everything there. We don't mind that because it's once in a blue moon. But when is the music going to be going on? And we can hear it. And there is... You can't see it for the trees, but there is a mobile trailer home park thing that's there. And I was just wondering... Oh, and he also has here, "Future Community Center." So, I'm wondering, we can't even get the damn pool done, and there's no city pool anymore. So, what's this community center we don't even have? I know that's a private thing there. And just up the road a little bit is where they're going to put their casino, if they ever get that off the ground. So, I just don't... I just don't know. And also, when... Who's the guy that used to be your jabber, he's now on the board here, City Council?
Mike McCain.
Yeah. Mike McCain, when he was gone, a whole bunch of gravel was laid in there, and he was hopping mad about it because it raised up the ground and we had it... A lot of it removed because it wasn't supposed to be messed with being a flood plain. You could have stuff there, but you had to have it lower. And supposedly, I have to pay flood tax or have that sort of thing. I own my home, so I don't have any flood thing. And my house, I've lived there for over 40 years, so it's never flooded. The only place that isn't in the flood plain is the cop shop, the county. And that was... I won't go into that. So, I'm done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Sitting there too damn long. My name is Cletus Warner, 400 North 19th East.
Been sitting here in a while.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we finally got things calmed down over there a little bit, yeah. I'm along with the young lady that kind of spoke here on certain items. I can't use these stock on glasses heavily, they're brand new. The music venue, I'm totally against. I've already had that experience at the beginning when they first moved in there, blasting the music very loud. It's not my cup of tea, Michael Jackson, you know? Anyway, and not having an asphalt down. I already have issues with the city. They keep promising North 19th to be asphalted and new infrastructure put in underneath sewer, but the dirt is just tremendous there, and it seems that the operators of those food trucks are actually the worst when they come racing in there. The consumers seem to be fairly decent, but it looks as by this plan here, you're increasing the parking spaces quite a few, and that's right next to my property. My property backs right up to this. And the dirt, dust, everything else, garbage that keeps blowing in, there's all kinds of plastic bags and things of that sort. You have people with their water bottles throwing that off in there. The debris that collects up against the fence, it's just a little bit out of control at this point in time. I never got things that were promised. The tree was torn out, my shade, and I never got a tree replaced, which I was promised that would be. It seems that promises are made, but they're not kept, and that's what I'm seeing here. You know, this future site for a community center, well, okay, we're talking about now a floodway. You're not going to be able to put a community center in unless it's all built up, you know, with the gravel, you know? So, how are you proposing that? I just don't see any of this happening, you know? It's terrible. I've never tried the food, I can't tell you about that. I'm not a big one anyway on fast food service that way. I don't know anything more. I know that there had been a couple of incidences where people coming off of American Legion onto that gravel entrance into that... They've actually run off of that embankment, and there had to be a tow truck. There was a travel trailer that was stalled out on the highway, Highway 30, and... Let's see. I guess one of the operators of the food truck had told somebody that they could camp there in a motorhome, and I had to get the police involved to ask him to move on. He was running a generator. I had woke up, got out of bed, went out there, tried to explain to the guy that it's not a camping lot, you know? But anyway, so, I've had to address quite a few issues, and quite frankly, I'm getting a little tired of it, and I can only see it getting worse, especially if you're talking about expanding and doing live music and everything else. We've already got kids doing donuts in the parking lot there and things of that sort. So, the dirt, like I say, is pretty atrocious. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Cletus.
Did I sign this?
Misty Pierce, again, I'm going to stand just because I want to point out a couple things real quick, and I know this isn't on you guys completely, but I wanted to point it out to the owner since he's here. The few times that my husband and I have been to this food court, and then the one time I came to pick up the public donors that I know have seen, this area right here is very narrow. I drive a mid-size SUV, and I could not turn around without making a U-turn right in that area. I had to actually drive down here because I've tried twice to make a U-turn. And then, that dip is really dangerous right in this area that Chris is pointing to, and then that tree is a hazard, or the trees. You cannot see trying to get out of there, and I've almost been hit, and my fender's almost been taken off every time I've come out there. I don't have a problem with the concept, but I think there's some danger there because of all the traffic that we're adding and everything else that's being added up the street, and then all the new housing, of course, more people, more traffic.
Thanks, Misty.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none of them, close the public hearing? Yeah, you're going to come up in just a second. Thank you, come up right now. Okay. Commission, questions, comments, thoughts? Do you want to go ahead and address any of the concerns?
Yeah, I'd like to, especially the last concern, and I think that is a very valid concern, the lady that was just up. I think that... Because I don't really live here, and I don't spend a lot of time entering and exiting the food truck court, but I would have to say I agree 100% with her concerns, especially the tree. If it impedes, you know, the visibility down American Legion, I should take it out. The bank here, especially as you first enter into the project there, that's... I think that's probably about a three-foot drop, and that I should probably put some sort of a barrier there. The problem is, you know, one of these concrete highway barrier objects would be, you know, would make a lot of sense right there, but the problem is I've got the floodway issues. So, I'm not allowed to do some of the things with this property that would be prudent to do. So, that's been a concern of mine from day one. We actually, you know, we were able to put that entrance in with the approval of ITD, and it's not, you know, it's not ideal. Down the road, I'm hoping if this, you know, the FEMA maps get... Down the road, I'm hoping if this, you know, the FEMA maps get redone, which they eventually will, that we could put, and, and it will probably down the road be developed into, you know, something else that's, you know, makes more sense for the, you know, for the overall community. But, uh, we will probably move the entrance to the middle of the property and do, you know, do some things. But we're, our hands are tied right now because of the floodway issues. And I think there, but given that, I think that there's some, some things that I could probably do with that drop there, you know, by, uh, maybe putting in some five-gallon buckets filled with soil, you know, they can be moved. So I don't think, uh, the FEMA officials would get upset with me about doing that. So we could probably do some things with the, with that entrance that would, that would improve it. With regard to the comments about the potential noise, that was an issue when I came before P and Z originally. And, uh, you know, I'd purchased a noise meter and we were working with that, that, the primary, uh, the, the people that were most concerned about it was the mortuary people. And we agreed at that time that we would face this, and it would be a small stage. By the way, it's never been intended to be a venue for rock concerts. This is, the intention there is to put a, a flatbed trailer and put maximum three acoustic type entertainers on the stage without, you know, there, there would be some amplification, but, uh, facing them towards American Legion and, and away from, you know, the, any of the residential people. That can easily be, easily, easily be accomplished.
Let me jump on that real quick as well. And, uh, I was here the last time you came in.
Okay, yes.
And we agreed that the noise level would not surpass sixty decibels, which is actually less than our ten A, ten PM to eight AM.
Right. Right, we had, I believe we had some hours, maximum hours. We don't intend to have late night music there. Our intention is to have, you know, my kind of music, soft rock, you know, uh, more folksy type of music there and one or two or three musicians, probably unpaid people that just want to get out and, you know, have their music listened to by other people. So the intention there has always been, you know, more community, not a rock event concert type of situation. Uh, and I think it's important for the success of, of Johnny Behind the Rocks, you know, in terms of gaining the momentum and, uh, getting people, uh, used to, you know, people that really enjoy the venue that I think that we can create there. With regard to the bike park thing, that was a concept that, uh, we'd come up with, you know, to provide, uh, entertainment and recreation for community people. And that, backing up, it's, we've never proposed a quote building community center. I suppose that when I put that into the site plan, my thought was a place for the community to gather, for entertainment. And not a built-up community center. But I see it as a, a, a community asset. I've always seen it that way. And that's always been our intent, to create something that, that is fun to go to for a family. And we all know where the price of restaurants and, and all that entertainment has gotten out of, out of hand. I mean, you know, you take your kids to the movies and dinner and, and, you know, it's, it's a very expensive endeavor. But going to food trucks, uh, playing horseshoes and cornhole, and if we, if we do this bike park, this bike pump park, as I guess they call it, uh, and, and things like that, we've certainly got the room to do it. And with some good signage for people to get in and for, with some improvements there to the entrance, to make it a safer entrance. I think that we could do something that I personally would be proud of, and I think that that would work well with the community. My background as a developer has always been, I'm, you know, I'm what's called an infill developer. And that's what I did in Boise for thirty years. I never went out to the hayfields. I always stayed in the center of town. I don't know if you folks, any of you have been to Hyde Park lately, but I developed that corner, basically when I bought the property in Hyde Park, it was, you know, the corner that Thirteenth Pub and Grill is on was a gas station. And Pareja Grill was a laundromat. And I, you know, thirty years ago, developed that, those properties into, uh, was my greatest success as a developer, doing something good for the community. And everything I've ever done has always been infill and focused on the community. So with this project, I want, I don't want to deviate from those kind of standards. I want to do something that, that the community, uh, is, I'm proud of, the community enjoys, and is not a nuisance to anybody. So with that, that's, I suppose that's my rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay.
Commission? Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair. Just a piece of relevant information, uh, just for your deliberation and your discussion. So the pump tracks, the, the bike park, outdoor recreation is an outright permitted use in the C three district. So technically, you could just do it, meet, meet all our standards, of course, um, as far as improvements, but that, that's an outright permitted use in that district today. One thing I also wanted to touch on is, as most of you can remember, this was a very hotly contested topic when we first went through it and we did the temporary use permit. It was one of the very few field trips that I got to take as a planning and zoning person with my commissioners and going out there. We also had significant input from the funeral home right next by, which they had concerns. And I believe there is wisdom in the conditions that we have. It could be inferred that we don't have the funeral home today, perhaps because those conditions were being implemented. So I think some of those conditions, if this body so sees it, could continue with the actual conditional use permit. And we also have items within our city code as far as noise ordinances and, and also the like that we can use, um, to help enforce and make sure that people who are residents of that neighborhood get to have the quiet enjoyment of their resident, of their residential property. I would just say that it would be staff's recommendation. I believe it's a good idea to condition our approval on whatever is acceptable per ITD. We've heard a lot about different uses that could happen from pump tracks to, um, having like a community area for like, maybe it's a future open air market, what have you. Um, I think those are good things, but we want to make sure those are clear with ITD. And then another thing to remember is we have another mechanism called a special event permit, where maybe we have some stricter conditions, but we can still do these larger type events where maybe we want to have a big open air market where the applicant is able to apply for that and it's free to apply. It gives the city a better hold of the events that are happening. So we know that if Michael Jackson is being played too loud, that they can call our office, that we can say, hey, we had a special event, we had these issues when we issued, when we issued you that last special event permit, what are you going to do to change it? Or you might not get one and you're going to have to go appeal it to city council. So we have, I just want to make sure you know that's another tool that we have to try to make good land use decisions, even though it's not strictly a land use tool. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Happy deliberating.
Well, I mean, okay, so to understand, we're going basically from something that was only applied for as a temporary permit to basically something that's going to be permanent is the way I'm looking at it with a few additional things which are permitted in the zoning already. So it fits the comprehensive plan. Commissioner?
I would agree with that. Scott?
Agreed. Yeah, I think that at the end of the day, if, if the applicant can stick to some of the predetermined agreements for decibel levels, you know, conscientious in terms of, you know, what kind of neighborly actions there are, making sure that garbage and stuff is taken care of, I mean, much like the construction areas. I know at my shop, my dumpsters get blown over about twice a week and it just kind of is what it is sometimes and it's the due diligence of going and picking it up. So understanding some of those concerns in a, kind of a public-facing law in that sense, um, I agree with, uh, with Christina, that really does fit with the plan. Um, I'm a fan of the product and I would like to make a motion, um, if chairman will allow.
All right, Billy, do you have anything?
Um, I think I pretty well summed it.
He's talking to her. Oh, sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner, I apologize on that. All right, Mr. Schroeder, do you have anything?
Uh, no, there's one question I had with, one of the sisters talked about light intrusion. Would that be an issue from this, uh, projected car there, whether you'd like, uh, pollution?
So according, according to what we have, it is, operating months will be for six continuous months and the operating hours shall be during daylight for seven days a week. So there is no night operation according to the permit that we have already, um, approved.
So to answer your question, no.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. Scott?
Um, chairman, I'd like to make a motion if, if we're, we're good here. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow the mobile food truck yard at twenty-ten American Legion Boulevard, parcels RPA three S zero seven three, or excuse me, E three zero three nine eight two, application PZ twenty-two zero zero nine three. According to the applicable, uh, regulations or code, city code four eleven two, mobile food concession definition of ped, uh, of peddling, vending, selling, displaying, offering, uh, a consumable item for sale from a portable vehicle. Mobile food concessions can operate in various forms, including but not limited to food trucks, food trailers, food vending carts and the like. Temporary buildings and children's vending stands are excluded from this definition. Uh, city code nine nine sixteen, a mobile food concession yard requires conditional use permit. Nine seventeen, regulations, standards and processes concerning conditional use permits. And city code nine nine twenty-nine, mobile food concession yard development standards. In conclusion, the subject, uh, excuse me, subject to site plan, uh, the amendment says required by building public works fire zoning officials to comply with applicable city codes and standards. The applicant shall meet the performance and design standards of the Mountain Home City Code Title Nine, Section nine dash nine, unique lane uses and performance, uh, standards including nine dash nine dash twenty-nine, mobile food concession yards. The applicant shall comply and, excuse me, shall comply with and receive all required approvals from the Idaho Transportation Department.
Yes, sir.
Not to interrupt the motion, um, but a part of the applicant's request was to be able, to be waive the improvements which are, which, to waive the improvements that cannot be made because of being in the floodplain, um, such as paving. So would you like that to be part of the motion as well?
Um, yes, I may amend my motion if the...
Yes, please.
Um, so to amend the motion to make sure that the, uh, the applicant, or excuse me, that the applicant be able to, um, what's our specific verbiage for that, Mr. Schroeder?
To waive the standards.
To waive the standards as affected by state and federal floodplain?
Rules?
Okay.
Okay, that's a big first, I have a second.
Second.
Second. You know what, I'm going to go with you, Billy. I'm going to go second with Billy.
Okay.
Um, Scott will go here. Christina?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
And, uh, that'll be an aye for me as well.
Yes, aye.
Get, get, got it. Thank, thank you. Internet, telling me.
He's like, I'm sorry.
Okay, moving down, um, you are free to go if you would like. Uh, no new business tonight. We do, commissioners have some old business that we need to get to. Uh, we have four applications that we need to, um, vote and, oh my goodness, my brain stopped working. We need to approve the findings of fact. Uh, and the first would be the Walmart drive-through applicant, um, for Walmart Stores Incorporated CEO Ben DeTino, uh, the WD Partners. Uh, was a requested for conditional use permit to allow a drive-in, drive-through establishment as expansion to the property located at twenty-seven forty-five American Legion Boulevard. The proposed drive-in establishment will allow for curbside pickup of online orders. Again, this is just approving or, yeah, approving the findings of fact.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, yes, Billy.
Beat you to it.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion of CDN.
There he goes again. Hey, you didn't let Billy take it over. Go. You got it.
I'm in a different time zone, that's why there's a delay. Um, I'd like to make a most... And the internet just... Yeah. Billy? Yeah. We're gonna, you just say aye when I say, okay?
Well...
Aye. Or nay, whenever you're ready, okay?
Thank you.
I said that just to make it clear. Christina, why don't you go ahead and give us a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the findings of fact for a request for a conditional use permit to allow a drive-in, drive-through establishment as an expansion to the property located at twenty-seven forty-five American Legion Boulevard. Um, that is parcel number RPA three S zero seven E three zero one three one zero. The proposed drive-in establishment will allow for curbside pickup of online orders, application PZ twenty-two seventy-seven.
First, I have a second. Second? Second by Scott. All right, Scott?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
And ayes as well. Um, before I move to the next one, can we just say for, to get rid of a lot of words, can we just say we approve the finding of fact for PZ twenty-two seventy-seven? Or do we have to go through all of that?
No, you can, you can move to adopt those.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, next one is for the preliminary plaque for the Jennifer Love Day and, uh, CEO Mark Taylor. Uh, it's a request to approve the West Eight South Town Homes preliminary plaque consisting of three point five six acres located between West Seven South Street and West Ninth South Street, between South Fifth West Street and South Third West B Street, whoever named streets in the mountain home. The West Eight South Town Homes will be an attached town home community that will include forty-two single-family attached town homes with one and two car garages and five common lots. Any other motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the findings of fact of application PZ twenty-two eighty-seven.
Love that. We have, first, we have a second. Second? Second by Scott. Billy?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And ayes as well. Um, moving on to that one, we have a annexation for the Mountain Bound RV applicant for the Mountain Bound Custom Storage and RV Park, request for annexation to allow for the development of an RV park and storage facility in approximately four, seize forty-six point six-three acres located south of northeast Woodhills Avenue, east of Highway twenty and north of Interstate eighty-four.
Like to make a motion?
Yes, you do.
Yes, I do. Um, I'd like to motion to, uh, um, approve the findings of fact for application PZ twenty-two eighty-nine.
Uh, first, we have a second. Second? Second by Scott. Scott?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
And ayes for me as well. Uh, finally, a planned unit development for the Mountain Bound RV applicant for the Mountain Bound Custom, or Storage and RV Park, request for the planned unit development to allow for the development of an RV park storage facility that will provide two hundred thirty-four RV parking and storage paths on approximately forty-six point six-three acres located south of northeast Woodhills Avenue, east of Highway twenty and north of Interstate eighty-four.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to motion to approve the findings of fact for application PZ twenty-two eighty-eight.
I have a first. Second? Second by Scott. Billy?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Scott? Aye for me as well. That is it for our items, uh, department head items. Any have, anybody have any questions over the monthly building permit report? Hearing none, items requested by commissioner staff are none. Ladies and gentlemen, we adjourn seven fifty. Ladies and gentlemen, we adjourn 7:50.
Yay.
Okay, I have two people to...